The moderator calls the meeting to order of this special meeting. Let us pray together. Gracious Lord, we gather this evening with Thanksgiving and with anxiety. We may be anxious about money, about the survival of our churches. Some of us are worried for loved ones. Gracious Lord, we also hear your words. Do not worry, but seek God's kingdom first and foremost. So Christ teach us to trust you, to trust that what we truly need will be given to us. Lift us from complacency to seek for the kingdom with all of our might and to want nothing so much as we want you. This we pray in the love and purpose of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. As we meet together, we acknowledge the Native American tribes on whose land we live and work. All of these used to belong to the Powhatan people. And within the boundaries of the Presbyterian, we recognize the Matupanai, the Upper Matupanai, Pamunki, Tukahominy, Rapa Hanukk, Monica, and Patlamak. We've already recognized those who are guests. And you've already done the rules. Let me talk just a little bit about voting procedures. If you are on Zoom, we cannot see you wave your hand. So you have to do raised hands and then Jess can see that on her screen. So please remember to raise hands and not on the machine, on the raised hand thing and not do this. Also, I know that the voting procedures are a bit tedious. In order to count all the votes of people on the phone, on Zoom, and present, I have to go through the steps each time. So if you're voting by phone, you're going to press star nine to vote yes. And then I'm going to go and do the people here and on Zoom. And once the yeses are cleared, then I will say to the people on their phones, please press star nine to vote no. And I know that gets tedious, but that's the only way we can be inclusive as we go along. The moderator recognizes Ruling Elder Kenna Payne for the adoption of the agenda.
The agenda tonight is on page five of your packet presented by the Mission Council. And we have no other changes or anything that we know about.
Thank you. Moderator recognizes Carla Pratt Keys. It's not on. It's not.
Thank you. Thank you, Jess. I do have a motion in regard to the agenda. I think you have it to project. Do you want to project? Ah, okay. My motion is to change the order of the agenda so that we discuss the third Mission Council recommendation, the formation of the Strategic Plan Review Task Force first.
Is there a second? Would anyone like to, would you like to speak to that?
I'm happy to speak to it. I know that significant concerns have been raised about the budget. And that's why that third recommendation has been made. I think that there are some of us here who would feel more confident voting on a budget if we were sure that a task force would be established and it works soon.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or debate? Then we're ready to vote on the amendment. All those, all right, all those on the phone to vote yes, please press star nine. Oh, well, they can still. Maybe not. So the motion is to do number three first. Those on the phone, if you're voting yes, please press star nine now. All those in favor of the motion who are present here now, please raise your hand if you are in favor of the motion. Have the clerks got the count? Okay. You may lower your hands. If you are on the phone and would like to vote no, please press star nine now. The motion does carry with 95% voting yes.
Moderator, I'd like to point out you did not ask for the no votes from the floor.
I am so sorry. Thank you. I get caught up in my own procedure. All those who vote against moving item number three to become item number one, please raise your hand. The motion is approved. Kenna, do you have comments that you would like to make?
Scripture reading and evening prayer next.
Thank you. For our evening prayer tonight, we'll be reading responsibly Psalm 27, which should appear on the screen. This is a portion of Psalm 27. It is the Psalm for evening prayer tonight. But I also think it's an appropriate Psalm in light of the people who are in Palestine and Israel and the Ukraine and those people who have little solace except God. Let us join together in reading Psalm 27. "The Lord is my light and my salvation; whom shall I fear? When evil doers assail me to devour my flesh, my adversaries and foes, they shall stumble and fall."
One thing I ask of the Lord, this I seek.
"To live in the house of the Lord all the days of my life, to behold the beauty of the Lord and to inquire in his temple; for he will hide me in his shelter in the day of trouble."
"If you can see me under the cover of..."
"Here, O Lord, when I cry aloud, be gracious to me and answer me." "Do not hide your face from me; do not turn your servant away in anger, you who have been my help." "If my father and mother forsake me, the Lord will take me up." "I believe that I shall see the goodness of the Lord and the land of the living." It is the tradition and evening prayer to spend a short time in confession. And I will bring both confession and Thanksgiving into the prayer. Christ Jesus, we confess this evening those things that we have done that have hurt other people, hurt ourselves, and hurt you, Christ. We confess our unwillingness to spread the gospel in words and deed. Put us on fire for you and for your good news. This evening, we pray for all those who languish in refugee camps and who are terrorized in war zones. Sustain those who do not have food and shelter and clean water and sustain those who cannot make ends meet and are one paycheck away from eviction. Gracious Lord, break the chains of addiction. Guide those struggling with difficult decisions. Gracious Lord, you are the giver of all mercy. It is you who painted the world with amazing color and astonishing forms of life. It is you, Lord, who can raise us up with wings like eagles. It is you who is full of steadfast love. Oh gracious Lord, you have given us gifts and talents. May we use them all so that people see in us your light shining through us and that through us others may give you praise. For this we pray in Jesus' love and purpose. Amen.
There's a little shelf under here. I never pay attention to that. Good evening. The Mission Council will make three motions for action tonight, all of which are interrelated. With the moderator's permission, I would like to address them all first.
Thank you.
The three motions are the adoption of the 2024 budget, the approval of the approach for the future use of the Church and Ministries Development Net Asset Fund, and the formation of the council task force to review and make recommendations concerning the strategic plan and several financial topics. At the October 21 Presbyterian meeting, the council reported that the process for the 2024 budget cycle had been enhanced during 2023 to specifically involve many others in the Presbyterian. Specifically, all of the committees, commissions, teams, and other ministries had representation at budget meetings during the year. They were all invited to the table. In addition to the additional people who worked with the council during the year, the council itself concentrated its efforts and many hours to detailed conversations on expense levels, declining patterns in congregational giving, consideration of shared support, perhaps in the form of a per capita measure, the nature of corporate support to various ministries, the benefits and costs that might be realized with the continuation of the three Presbyterian model, the appropriate use of the Church and Ministries Development Net Asset Fund, the potential receipt and use of proceeds from the sale of Presbyterian properties, including possibly the current office building, and many other related topics. At that meeting, we heard comments from many points of view on these topics, especially as to the proposed 2024 budget and the use of the Church and Ministries Development Net Asset Fund. We thank everyone for their comments and interest in these important topics. During the week of October 23rd, right after that Presbyterian meeting, the Mission Council hosted three evening Zoom meetings to answer questions and to hear any comments about the budget. A total of 51 people attended these sessions from all around the Presbyterian. Attendees asked wonderful questions and provided excellent comments and feedback. Persons with multiple perspectives spoke with clarity and passion on both sides. The council deeply thanks all of those who took their time and interest to attend one of these sessions and to speak to us about their concerns. Your insight was appreciated. The council met immediately after the last of these three sessions and discussed all that we had heard at both the Presbyterian meeting and the evening sessions. As a result of our evaluation of them, the council decided to continue proposing the budget as had been originally presented. We are aware that some of the people will not be happy with this decision, and we are also aware that others will be pleased with this decision. This budget is the one that was released with the packet on November 2nd for this meeting. After the release of the packet, I fielded a budget question from a minister member of the Presbyterian concerning the total amounts of the itemized Presbyterian compensation packages. In response to the question, I double-checked all of the amounts and found some errors in the amounts of medical coverage expenses. Two types of errors had been made in the original budget, a formula calculation error in the Excel spreadsheet that we used, and errors in the premium rates used in calculating the benefit. I corrected the amounts where necessary, working with Cindy, using the best information available last week. The Mission Council met and took action to approve this correction to be sent out to attendees of this meeting. Notice of this correction was sent to all registered attendees of this meeting via email on Tuesday, which briefly explained the nature and amounts of the error. The email also resent the whole packet, which included the corrected one-page budget summary with the affected lines highlighted. This can be found on page 10 of the corrected packet. I did not correct the full detailed budget report. I didn't realize the whole packet was going out again. As a result of this investigation, the proposed budget has been corrected by an increase in the cost for the three Presbyterians of $24,721 and by an offsetting decrease in the cost for other staff members of $1,173. The amount for the Presbyterians would be supported by the use of the Church and Ministries Development Fund. The net impact on expenses is $23,548. I apologize if this correction caused any confusion. The Mission Council believed it was appropriate to get this correction made and reflected in the proposed budget as soon as possible. So it was not so much a change as it was a correction. I've been asked to elaborate on the base staff salaries that are reflected in the budget. For many years, staff salaries have been increased by basic cost of living raises each new year. If possible, particular government cost of living information at year end was used to determine this rate of increase. Since this year's budget vote is being held well before the end of the calendar year, this year-end information is not yet available. So the budget includes a 3% increase for all positions effective January 1st. The council has asked the personnel committee to review this rate when the new rates do become available as a basis for comparison. At the October 21 Presbyterian meeting, you heard full comments from the council in support of this budget. We continue to believe that this budget and its continuation for 2024 of the full three Presbyterian staffing model will honor a three-year understanding of implementation of the strategic plan and will provide valuable support to our churches and pastors while we are still working to determine the best way to continue that support. There is much that can be accomplished in 2024 with your support of this budget. As with many topics, we know that not everyone will agree with this budget in total or on any particular line item. Not everyone will agree with the use of the Church and Ministries Development Net Asset Fund. There is no way that everyone can be happy in agreement with these proposals. We can only reiterate that it was developed with the input of people across the Presbyterian in the early and the later stages and believe its continuation of the three Presbyterian model for 2024 is of great benefit to the Presbyterian, to our pastors, and to our churches. While we are not in a position to prevent motions of amendments, we hope that this budget will be voted on as is with a straight yes or no vote. The second item being proposed is the approach to be used for the continued use of the Church and Ministries Development Fund for the next few years. This can be found on page 18 of the packet with comments provided on page 17. I do want to point out that the next to bottom line is the amount in excess of a minimum balance of $1.5 million. Some people said that might not have been clear. No change has been made in this approach since the October 21 Presbyterian meeting. The last item in the Mission Council's proposal, which by the amendment of the agenda will be voted on first, is the proposal as outlined in the third item, the formation of a task force to study and report on many financial realities that the Presbyterian faces, starting with the strategic plan, its implementation and impact, funding sources for future budgets, annual budgets, and support to various ministries and other related topics. The task force would be a function of the council as we are proposing it and would be supported by the council and appropriate staff members. The means of selection and reporting to the Presbyterian are outlined in the details of the motion. With all of the financial topics discussed by the Mission Council this year and putting together the 2024 budget, we believe a task force would be able to focus on the particular financial challenges we face now and in the future. So, moderator, the Mission Council makes the motion, which is number three in the packet, but has been moved up to number one in sequence. The Mission Council moves and recommends that the council form a task force of the council with persons from around the Presbyterian to study the current strategic plan and its implementation and impact on the life of the Presbyterian, to study present and future sources of funding that would consider, but not be limited to, sustainability, per capita, stewardship, and other sources. To be comprised of persons in the Presbyterian with a broad sense of diversity, inclusion, interest, and experience. To be formed by the current moderator of the Presbyterian, which is Reverend Van Berry, the incoming moderator of the Presbyterian, Cherry Peters, the incoming moderator of the Mission Council, Reverend Janet James, and the incoming vice moderator of the Mission Council, Reverend Carrie Foster. And it would be formed and first convened in December of 2023 with its initial findings to be presented at the February 2024 Stated Presbyterian Meeting and a final report in April. That is our motion.
Thank you. It does not need a second since it comes from a committee. I see someone already at the mic for discussion.
Gary Charles, pastor at Cove Presbyterian Church, and I rise to offer a substitute motion for, to substitute for number two and number three from the Mission Council. And the substitute motion will be passed out now by the tellers. And there is a copy on the screen. Jess, do you have a copy of that on the screen?
Thank you. A substitute motion does require a second.
If I may speak to the motion?
Of course you may. Thank you.
Friends, we are about to adopt a budget or vote on adopting a budget that relies more on reserve funds than current giving of member churches. And some argue that this type of deficit funding is necessary in the current moment, and they may be right. I hope most would argue that this type of deficit funding is not sustainable moving forward. And I would argue that it is not a faithful use of these reserve resources. So I rise to offer this substitute to build upon the good work of the Mission Council and trustees, but also to create a task force that has a larger scope of work than the one laid out by the Mission Council in motion number three. The task force proposed in the substitute motion will be asked to reexamine the strategic plan and the new staffing model in light of the financial realities of the post-pandemic church and Presbyterian. It will also be asked to provide transparency about existing Presbyterian reserve funds, not just the Church and Ministry fund, but all reserve funds, and offer informed advice on how the Presbyterian can best use these funds in a sustainable and faithful fashion moving forward. Finally, just as the vision and strategic planning work was reportable to Presbyterian, so this motion suggests that the task force will report to the full body of Presbyterian. I respectfully ask that you support this substitute motion to replace the current motions, number two and three of the Mission Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, a substitute motion is a little tricky. What we have to do with a substitute motion is we have to perfect the main motion, which means if there are any amendments to the main motion as presented, that's done first. Then we move to the substitute motion for any amendments and discussion. Then if it is perfected, meaning everybody's had a chance to speak, then we, then I ask, shall the substitute motion become the main motion? And if it is approved, it becomes the main motion, and we discuss the merits of the substitute motion. I know this is tricky business, but I have it from Robert's Rules of Order right here. So what we have to do right now is we have to perfect the main motion. So are there any amendments to the main motion as presented? Seeing no one rising to speak, I declare that the main motion is perfected. We now move to perfecting the substitute motion. So are there any amendments to the substitute motion? Or debate? There is not a person here. Is there anybody online? All right. So shall the substitute motion become the main motion? And this requires a vote. So all those who are on the phone, press star. They can. Does anyone want to speak for or against this becoming the main motion?
David Ross, Ruling Elder at Ginnipart Church. Don't want to belabor the point, but I just want to echo everything Gary Charles said. As I did the last meeting, I think he is on track. I think this is a very good approach to this situation that we face. And I strongly encourage all of us to vote in favor of the amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to the substitute motion?
Janet James, pastor of the Gatenkirk. I just want to kind of speak to the part about reporting to the Presbyterian versus reporting to the Mission Council and say that we had quite a bit of discussion about that, trying to figure out the right thing to do. And my concern is that it slows down the reporting and the communication if it goes, if we have to wait on going to the Presbyterian for the reports.
Thank you. So you are speaking against the substitute?
Just would Sam Adams, Union Presbyterian Seminary, would grateful for the work that Mission Council and Gary and others have done on this. Speaking in favor of making the substitute motion the main motion, I would just also lift up scripture in support of the substitute motion, that when one reaches a place of change, sudden change, in some cases, one could argue crisis in light of COVID, we have some antecedents. change, sudden change, in some cases, one could argue crisis in light of COVID, we have some antecedents in scripture and Deuteronomy and in Acts where the collective body came together in this pursuit of mishpat justice and koinonia community and decided that new collective action was possible and necessary, and that it had to be the entire deliberative body, whether it was the earliest disciples or the Israelites, men and women coming together to make collective discernment. So we have ample places where we can look to guidance from the Bible in this regard, and I think it's warranted given where we find ourselves.
Thank you. Tom Coy.
Yes, moderator. I would like to speak in favor of the substitute as well. Coming from my experience with the original strategic planning task force, part of the genius of that group, we met for two years, which is longer than this is, thank God. But what we did is a very thorough look at the whole Presbyterian and and I think if we're going to evaluate where we are now with the strategic plan and the funding, a thorough look is better than a superficial one. And I see that the substitute provides more opportunity for a deeper dive and a more comprehensive assessment.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak against the substitute motion? In which case discussion stops. So we are voting on shall the substitute motion become the main motion? If you are on the phone, press star nine now to vote yes. If you are in person, please raise your hand to vote yes. So I invite the clerks to come forward and give their numbers. I know. All those against this becoming the substitute motion becoming the main motion, please raise your hand. If you are on the phone, please press star nine now to vote no on substituting the substitute motion for the main motion. The motion does carry, if you'd like a precise count, we'll give you, we'll do another minute. The motion carries one hundred and thirty-three to eight. So the substitute motion is now on the floor. Are there people again to speak for or against the substitute now the main motion?
Carrie Foster, pastor at Amelia Presbyterian Church. Not so much for or against, but seeking clarity for item number six. Since I'm not a, did not format this new way forward, and comments have been made about speeding things up and that kind of nature. I'm curious as to what the motion maker has in mind for their timeline. If we're going to be working on a motion that they have perfected, I would be very curious to know how they envision the timeline playing out, clarity save.
Carrie, good question. Thank you. The notion of a initial report being convened in December as a body, an initial report and at the February stated meeting, final report to be published in April, and recommendations stemming from the report presented no later than June two thousand and twenty four. In my mind, gives an appropriate sense of urgency to the conversations before us that we need to decide when as a body.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? For or against?
Hi, Catherine Todd. I'm a teaching elder and at large at the moment. I have a question asking clarification.
Right, you need to make sure you're speaking right into the line.
Okay, I have a clarification question. On number three, we're bringing in terms that are not used elsewhere in the prior main motion. So I'm curious why Genesis and Generations Fund, for example, was brought in. Yeah, I just want to understand.
Can I correct me if I'm wrong here, but the budget being proposed will use resources, reserve resources primarily from the Church and Ministries Development Fund, but also will use some from the Genesis and Generations Fund?
That is correct.
So that's the answer to your question. The what I'm asking in this substitute is that we'll also do a deep dive into all of the reserve funds and to set some real clarity about their future use and the scope of their use going forward.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion?
Catherine Todd, I'd like to ask a second question of clarity. I see sustainability emphasized in number three after it's already been in number two. So I'm wondering what the repetition is designed to is saying about our decision.
This substitute builds off of the good work of the Mission Council, and so there will be some repetition and some language. Number two is purely the Mission Council's language. Number three is new language that is introduced. And by this, by financially sustainable, what I am intending is looking at what is appropriate use of reserve funds today, but also five years from now, ten years from now, fifteen years from now.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Then we are ready to vote. All those in favor of what is now the main motion, please raise your hands. If you are on the phone, please press star nine now to vote in favor of the motion. You may lower your hands. If you are against the motion, please press star nine now if you are on the phone. And if you are against the motion here, present, please raise your hand now. The motion carries one hundred and eighteen to four. The substitute motion, in effect, eliminated number two of the Mission Council's report. So we now go back to recommendation number one.
Moderator, the Mission Council recommends the Presbyterian adopt a budget for two thousand and twenty four of one million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars of expenses with projected revenues of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, zero twenty, and a net loss of seven hundred and forty-two thousand, nine twenty-five. Of that proposed loss, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seven, or eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of the loss would be supported by the Church and Ministries Development Net Asset Fund. This motion has been corrected for the errors discussed earlier.
It comes from a committee. It does not need a second. I see someone already at the mic.
Did you recognize me?
Sorry, yes.
My name is Josh Indrajewski, teaching elder at First Pres Richmond. I move that we amend recommendation one as follows. The Mission Council recommends the Presbyterian adopt a budget for two thousand and twenty four as presented to the one hundred fifteenth stated meeting, except for entities covered under new worshiping communities whose budgets will remain at two thousand and twenty-three levels or one hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred, as opposed to the proposed one hundred seventeen thousand, two forty-eight. The additional cost of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two will be added to the proposed draw from the Church and Ministries Development Net Asset Fund.
Thank you. It is an amendment. It needs a second. Is there? There's a second? Would you like to speak to the motion?
Would. I'm proposing this amendment because a budget is a statement of values and priorities. I cannot vote for a budget that asks immigrant communities and pastors who care for children in juvenile detention to take a twenty-five percent cut in funding while offering a raise to Presbyterian staff. That is not a statement of value that I can sign on to, especially as the leaders of these groups have not been directly consulted about how these cuts will affect the viability of their ministries. I realize this motion increases the draw on the Church and Ministries Development Fund. I would suggest that supporting ministry in these vulnerable communities is exactly what those dollars should be used for. To me, this is not adding to our draw on reserves, but using these funds to appropriately support ministry. Whether we spend it in two thousand and twenty-four or in the future, this is how these funds should be spent. I would like to see the task force we established tonight make bold, difficult, and necessary recommendations that will enable us to support small and struggling congregations in a similar way. In the meantime, I urge this body not to allow these vital ministries to suffer cuts in funding that threaten their viability. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to be clear to the body, the recommendation, the amendment is to add twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars in order to restore the amount to the new worshiping communities. Is there, are there people who would like to vote for, debate the motion? Who isn't? Yes. Yes. There is a hand raised, Aruna. Would you like to speak? Aruna?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I agree that we should make this amendment because I do believe that the missions are more important rather than the salaries to the presbyteries, the Presbyterian lead presbyters. I mean, we have an increase there, and we are cutting short from the mission, which I don't think is right. I'm on board for that.
Thank you. So you're speaking for the amendment, Patrick Lane?
Yes, for the amendment.
For the amendment. I believe Patrick Lane's hand is up.
Apologies, Madam Moderator. That was for an amendment to recommendation number one, not to speak to this.
Thank you.
Moderator, I have a question that I'd like clarifying. The amendment references that present, that budget presented at the one hundred fifteenth stated meeting, which would exclude the corrections that we were presenting tonight for medical expenses on staff. I'd like to know if that was the intent.
No, that was not the intent, and I think your explanation earlier that it was a correction, not a change, would mean that this is consistent with what we are all looking at tonight.
Right, but what we presented tonight was not presented at the one hundred fifteenth stated meeting. Okay, I'm just clear.
Yes, that is an important thing to note.
As corrected for the correction.
I don't know if there's a friendly amendment that can be made, but.
So the desire for a friendly amendment to take out the one hundred fifteenth stated meeting is the budget as corrected. Someone willing?
Presented, perhaps presented at the special meeting tonight?
Yes, I, that would be consistent with my wishes.
Madam Moderator, it's not really such a thing as a friendly amendment, but if the body goes along with it, Kenna has explained that the, what the number had to be corrected and what the intention is, is to add the money to whatever is the budget that we're considering. Is that not correct, Kenna?
Yes, that would be correct. Thank you.
So unless.
That's a friendly amendment. That's just an editorial correction.
Yes, yes.
So unless there are objections, we will do the amendment as corrected. Yes. Yep. Are there any more? Is there any more debate on the amendment? Which is to restore the twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars to the new worshiping communities line item? I can't see it, but. James Canetti has a hand raised. Can I?
Madam Moderator, of course, nothing new but to support completely what Joshua has said in all good consciousness, and of course, I cannot. I do plead that we do not dip into. and cut our lifeline, the new worshiping congregations and those kids in juvenile facilities. It's a matter of values and it is a matter of lifeline that we do not want to risk.
Thank you. Is there anyone against the amendment? Then I believe we are ready to vote on the amendment. Yes.
Jim Elliott, ruling elder here at Westminster Presbyterian Church. Just a question of clarification. So in essence, the deficit budget would actually increase by the $27,000.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else rising to ask a question. Is there anyone online, Jess? Then we are ready to move to the vote on the amendment. Just on the amendment. So the amendment is to restore the $27,252 to the new worshiping communities. The amendment to restore $27,252 to the new worshiping communities to be drawn from the Church and Ministries Development Fund. So as that poll is being done here, if you are for the amendment and on the phone, please press star nine now to vote yes. If you are present in the room and you are voting for the amendment, please raise your hand for yes. Have the tallers finished counting? If you are in the room and want to vote no for the amendment, please raise your hand. Please raise them high enough for them to see. If you are on the phone and would like to vote no to the amendment, please press star nine now. In just a minute, we'll have a tally. I feel like there ought to be an ad. Or we sing a verse of a hymn while we wait. Jeopardy music, certainly, yeah. The amendment passes 97 to 26. So the motion is before us as amended. You want me to just go on?
Yeah, I can't do the math that quickly in my head.
Okay, so the Mission Council represents to the Presbyterian adopt a budget for 2024 with the correction and the amendment. Patrick Lane has his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Patrick Lane, teaching elder at Mission Presbyterian Church. I support the Mission Council's good work on the 2024 budget and continue to support it as it's amended. However, with the budgeting process now being at a zero-based budget and all things needing to be justified, I offer the following amendment to recommendation number one. That upon the adoption of the Presbyterian's 2024 budget, the Mission Council shall develop a procedure for financial reporting to hold all individuals, groups, committees, councils, teams, or other which receive POJ funds accountable to justified spending based on the employed zero-based budgeting system. This process shall include reporting and a way of reviewing fund usage in its guidelines and shall be presented for the POJ for approval and implementation at the February 17, 2024, the 116th Presbyterian meeting to be used throughout the remainder of the financial year and beyond if deemed appropriate in future budget spending processes.
Thank you. Was there a second?
Is that, is that an amendment to the budget motion or a new motion entirely?
It's a.
That is an amendment.
An amendment.
An amendment to the motion to include a process.
Right.
Okay.
Was there a second? Is there a discussion? Patrick, would you like to speak to this?
I'm happy to speak to it. When, so in the spring, the Mission Council stated that they would be moving to a zero-based budget in which all expenditures needed to be justified in the budget. That's great. I think that's needed and a well-done process. However, there's been no procedures, at least that I'm aware of, that hold people accountable to what they are justified spending. Therefore, I believe that a system needs to be developed and implemented very quickly to justify the use of a zero-based budget.
To justify the use of the actual spending items, not just using a zero-based system?
Well, there's no, I see no reason to use a zero-based budget system and ask people to justify what they are spending if we are not reviewing what and how things are being spent on a regular basis via this procedure that the Mission Council needs to develop.
In developing this year's budget, we did ask for zero-based budgeting from everybody. Some people were better at it than others, first year of new thing, but if I'm understanding, Patrick, that he wants them to also, not just in developing the budget, but in following through with the budget versus actual, to justify the actual expenditures.
So Kenna, would you please explain to the body what a zero-based budget is?
A zero-based budget is a system of developing a budget where you start from scratch. You don't say, we spent $10,000 last year. We think we'll spend another two this year. It's $12,000. We asked them all, what are the programs and the ministries that you want? Especially if, for example, the small church group that might have a seminar or a weekend retreat or something. We wanted to know, how many people do you think you're going to bring in? What are the hotel? What are the costs of doing this if you're bringing in a speaker? For some of the, the regular, for lack of a better word, the regular committees like COM or CPM, we said, how many financial, psychological exams, for example, do you think you're going to need this year? Give us the dollar amount and the number. They're just estimates, certainly on the number, but it was to build up a budget item, line item by committee from zero, not from any relationship of a previous year or pattern. This year, how much do you think you're going to spend and itemize it? It's zero-based.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any debate on the amendment to the main motion number one? Yes, Laura.
Laura Sugg, pastor of South Plains. I speak against this amendment. I understand the spirit in which it is offered. I do not think it is necessary. I trust that this accountability will continue, and so I speak against the motion, the amendment.
Thank you. John Garrett has his hand raised. John?
Yes, my question is to Patrick. Who would approve, make the approval in the Presbyterian office?
That will need to be decided by the Mission Council as they develop this procedure. I agree that we want to believe that everyone is accountable to the money that they are spending. However, as the budget has been of major concern, I believe that this is necessary to hold people to be accountable. Otherwise, I see no reason to be doing a justified system, zero-based budgeting. That does not make any sense to me personally.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom Coy has his hand up.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I think this is a, this might be a helpful procedure. I'm, I'm finding myself not really excited by it because it seems like it's begging the question of why we have such an astounding deficit. I'm not sure controlling expenses even tighter will really get to the core issues of why we're so out of balance. I, I express that ambiguity. I'm not sure how I'll vote yet, but I'm expressing my ambiguity on it.
Thank you. Chris Webster. The moderator recognizes you. Chris Webster?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had my microphone turned off. I would like to indicate my opposition to this change. I have to agree with Reverend Sugg from the standpoint of the process and trusting the process. It, the, my definition of zero-based budget is one where we are looking at each of those items. So there's some redundancy here. Again, I appreciate the spirit and the desire to keep it, keep the budget on track, one which can be used appropriately, but in this case, the wording as presented, I do not think is appropriate for the current process.
Thank you. Does anyone want to speak for the amendment?
May I add some additional comments?
Yes.
We went to the zero-based budget so that people, we have so many new leaders in the Presbyterian, they would start from scratch. They would have to think about what their committee, commission, committee, team, or other ministry has to work on for 2024 and put, like I said, very specific calculations. Not just, we want to have a retreat and we're going to budget $5,000. No. Tell us how many people, are you going to get a speaker? Is it going to be at a church or at Roslyn Center? So we asked for all of that. As with any budget, when you get to the actual, the office, especially with Cindy, they watch that. Now, that doesn't mean that a group maybe has to stay with the original plan in the, that came up with the, the budget. You know, if they find they need two smaller retreats and it doesn't expend more money than their budget, then they're going to be allowed to do that. So there is some flexibility. It's just to come up with an estimate for the budget. And I can tell you that the Mission Council looks at the financial reports. Well, this year's been every month because we've been meeting every month. But Cindy watches it very carefully and she tells us where we have problems, where we have, you know, people that are over their budget, and she is very good actually at looking to see if there are any other sources that could be used for that. So I think we already have, once we use the zero-based budget to develop the budget, I think it's understood that you live within that budget. It may not be exactly the same program or the ministry you wanted the event, but it's within that same budget. And I don't know that having people be forced to stick with the events that they estimated a year and a half earlier would, as long as they're within their total budget, I don't think that would be helpful.
Are there any new comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carrie Foster, Pastor Amelia Presbyterian Church. We've already voted on this. When we charged the Mission Council to form that task force to do everything that we're supposed to be doing, that would be in their purvey. There's no need to have that group do it and then have Mission Council do it as well and then have two competing motions on the floor at some future Presbyterian. We have already said in the process that work.
Thank you.
May I make one other? One other quick. There is a financial procedures policy for the Presbyterian. It is dated in 2007. So it is something that I had been hoping to work on and the budget wasn't, that we've, budget process we began this year was nowhere near what was in that old document. So we are very much aware, we need to upgrade and that financial procedure and Mission Council might be the better place to put it.
I believe we're ready to vote. If you are on the phone and would like to vote for the amendment, which, I'll try to summarize. Develop a procedure for financial reporting for all groups on a zero-based budgeting system. I won't read the full page. So if you're on the phone and for this amendment, please press star nine now. If you are in the room, if you are for the amendment, please raise your hand now. If you are in the room and against the amendment, please raise your hand now. If you're on the phone, please press star nine now to vote against the amendment. The amendment is defeated. We're back to the main motion as amended. Yes, sir.
Yes, JR Marker, ruling elder Fairfield Presbyterian. Have a quick question on explanation on the budget. You had mentioned that salaries, you mentioned something about a 3% increase, but it looks like a lot of the staff, the budget is showing a decrease from last.
The, the budget reflects the elimination of the assistant to the stated clerk position for next year. We did not include any budget, so that was a whole position in the non-itemized items.
Okay, but.
And the stated clerk went down also, the stated clerk.
I see the stated clerk is about half of what it was in '23, but some of the Presbyterian's numbers went down as well.
Those were the errors from the medical insurance that I explained earlier. I, I did not realize they would be sending out the whole packet again, so I didn't bother changing and giving you five more pages of detail. It's just the one-page summary.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Tom Coy.
Moderator, the, the one question I have is if, if we vote no on this budget, what happens then? Where are we?
Well, I think it basically would go back to the Mission Council, who is responsible for establishing the budget. In the past several years, the actual, the actual vote on the budget has occurred in the February meeting. So I would say the new Mission Council, starting January 1st. So I would say the new Mission Council, starting January first, that group of people would work to try and bring back a revised budget at the February meeting. I can't hold them responsible for that because I'm rotating off, but I'm sure they would try to do that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? And if you come to the mic, please make sure that you're right at the mic so everyone can hear. I see no more people coming to the mic and I see no hand raised on Zoom. So we now move to vote on the budget as amended, which includes the twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars added to it. And I don't have the total of what that would be.
I don't have the total either. I'm sorry.
So if you are on the phone and want to vote for the budget as amended, please press star nine now. If you are present in the room and voting for the proposed budget as amended, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone now and are voting no for the proposed budget as amended, please press star nine now. And if you're voting against the proposed budget and you're in the room now, please pressure, please raise your hand. Press your button, raise your hand. I don't care. You may lower your hands. The motion carries eighty-two to forty-one.
That concludes the Mission Council report.
Thank you. We have no Committee on Ministry report. Are there nominations? Walter Cantor?
Yes, yes. Thank you, moderator. I have two items that I would like the Presbyterian to consider. The first is the following slate, which I'm putting forward on behalf of the nominating committee. There are two names for the Commission on Ministry. The first is the Ruling Elder Peggy Fox from Woodville to serve in the class of two thousand twenty-six as a member-at-large. Then we have you, Roslyn Bamberg, honorably retired, currently interim at Bethlehem to Minister of Word and Sacrament, to serve in the class of two thousand twenty-six as a member-at-large. Then on the Mission Council, as well as the trustees, we would like to put forward the name of the Ruling Elder Kendra Crabtree from First Richmond to serve in the class of two thousand twenty-six as a member-at-large. And then we would like to put forward a name for Vice Moderator for the Presbyterian in two thousand twenty-four. And we put forward Josh A. He told me I didn't have to use his entire last name. He's from First Richmond and he is a Minister of Word and Sacrament.
Are there nominations from the floor? Seeing none, we'll vote on the slate. All those in favor of the report from nominations, please say aye. Any opposed? No.
The second item that I wanted to, oh, is there? All right.
I didn't do the raised hands. If you're for the slate, please press star nine now. And if you're against the slate, please volunteer for these positions. Please press star nine now. Walter, do you have something else?
Yes, a quick note regarding GA Commissioners. After our election in August, we elected three Teaching Elder Commissioners to the General Assembly. After that point, we became aware that due to the POJ's membership now dipping below sixteen thousand, we are actually only eligible to send two Teaching Elders and two Ruling Elder Commissioners. The COIN conferred about this and resolved that we could send Teaching Elders Nicole Ball and James Tenetti to be our Principal Commissioners and to have Ray, Teaching Elder Ray Roberts as an alternate. And we also elected the Ruling Elder James Luckett in August. And the Ruling Elder Barry Parks of Westminster, Charlottesville, has been discussed at our recent nominating meeting, but we took no action because we hadn't talked to him yet. Since our last meeting, I have talked to him. And I would like to put Barry Parks' name forward to fill that last Ruling Elder Commission seat for General Assembly Commissioner.
So Walter, would you please read the names of those approved by the nominating committee? Because we'll need a second for Barry Parks.
The, the only name that I am putting forward right now comes from, comes from me. It's Barry Parks. The other names have already been approved.
Is there a second? Are there nominations from the floor? Seeing none, we move to a vote. If you are for the slate for Barry Parks being added to those going to General Assembly and you're on the phone, please. Can they go ahead and vote? Okay, so if you're on the phone and approve Barry Parks as a Commissioner, please press star nine now. We have to get our technology to sync. If you're present in the room and want to approve Barry Parks, I need a second. Did I say a second? All right, I'm getting tired. All right. All those for approving him, please raise your hands. Any opposed by the same sign? If you're on the phone and want to vote against, please press star nine now. I'm not seeing a poll. It is approved.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Walter. The moderator declares that the meeting has, the agenda is completed. Oh, I would like to thank the tellers who helped us tonight. That was a big help. So thank you. I would also like to thank Kenna Payne, who has. Oh, thank you. For Carol Martin for bringing the food. Is that the only other person I forgot? Let us pray. Gracious Lord, take us home safely. Bring us safely back together. Give us restful sleep. We give you thanks for all those who have worked so hard on this budget, for those who have made amendments. And we lift up our churches. We give thanks for all those doing such wonderful work for the sake of Jesus Christ. We give you thanks for those who are faithful with a little and with much. And in all things, oh Lord, bless what is favorable in your sight. And may what is not fade away. Deepen our faith and our faithfulness. For this we pray in the love and will of Jesus Christ. Amen.